Okay, call this meeting in order if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, I do.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. The Constitution of America stands on the nation's record, God, and the people. Thank you. Any subtractions from the consent agenda? Motion to approve that consent agenda? No move. Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. Anoka County, JPA, Lexington Avenue, Broadway Project. Presentation. Is there no one here for that?
There isn't anyone here this evening. What I wanted to go over this evening is just briefly, I wanted to go over the joint powers agreement with you, outline a few things that I thought needed to be clarified. We will have several of these joint power agreements come through from the county and wanted the councils to become familiar with the requirements that come with each of these joint powers agreements. So, one of the things that I wanted to talk about is, in this particular case, this is the project that's at County Road 17 and 18, it's the traffic signal. So, it's two county roads that come together. So, we are working with Anoka County, Ham Lake, and Columbus in this particular project. So, if we look at the traffic signals, it does say that there will be 50% cost, but this is a federally funded project. So, if we skip down to page 12, I'll just cut to the cost in the mean area, then we'll go back with the policy issues. So, if you look at the estimated cost of construction, it's over 838,000 dollars. It talks about that federal dollars will cover 90%, and then it comes down to where it says the estimated city construction cost would be $5,570. It also indicates that once you subtract out the federal funds that are allocated to the city, it's $557. In the third paragraph, it talks about that we have to have our cost share of engineering, and then that came down to $1,000. In this particular case, I'm not looking for the council to approve the joint powers agreement tonight. What I simply wanted to do was talk about costs and understand that all of these projects that we're doing, there is going to be a component where the city will have a cost share, or will have some allocation of dollars, or will be taking on maintenance costs over time. And in this particular case, it's $1,000 that they're looking at. My question back to the county was, how are we allocating this with Ham Lake? It didn't really, it didn't really talk about, is Ham Lake taking on 30%? Are we taking on 70%? Is it 50/50?
Well, it goes back to a county road to county road, and we're supposed to pay for the insurance for the light poles, we're supposed to pay for the power for the light poles, and we're supposed to pay to maintain the light poles on a county intersection.
That is correct.
I don't understand.
I agree. I don't understa- I don't get it.
You get that?
Isn't that same as Kettle River and Broadway? They're both county roads though, too.
Yeah, but- I rest my case.
Yeah, but, yeah, and that's what we fought about before, was why are we-
And come to find out that, you know, we needed to up our insurance for the city to include the light poles, include the stop sign, you know, things like that.
I think the same, the same issues came up with the County Road 54 project, right? There's-
Yes.
The county's policy when working in the local unit to get some share from the local unit. I think they do this all over the county.
But like County Road 54 and Kettle River Boulevard, there is some sort of maybe benefit. What benefit? This is out on the edge of town, I mean, what, what's the benefit? I mean, what's the benefit, I mean, any of this?
Denny drives it all the time. I don't drive it that often.
I've spent the benefit near Lotteville.
Really? Because I never have a problem at that corner. You don't understand the Roundabout.
Come see me more often.
Well, I could.
Elizabeth, is that Columbus on the other side of Lexington?
No.
Then why aren't these cost sharing on this, like you're saying?
It isn't.
Or maybe they are, but I think that's something we should look into.
For Ham Lake?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ham Lake is involved and has been at all the meetings, you know, representative. I just don't know, this, when I was reading this joint powers agreement, it didn't say what portion is allocated to Ham Lake and what portion is Columbus, so I must say, miss-
There's a very small print spreadsheet in the back that has, City of Columbus is 5,570, and Ham Lake is 52,710, so about 10 to 1.
I know when the 54 project agreement was in front of you, we had county staff here to explain, to answer your questions, like the one that was just raised, so I don't know if that's something you want to arrange, but that's how it went in that project.
And that's what I'm seeking from the council. There's, there's this joint power, powers agreement that's before us, and also the joint powers agreement for County 54. If you feel that you want the county here to go over all the issues, we can have them at the next meeting, and they can go over any questions and issues.
How did you read that, Dennis?
Yeah, I printed it out 11 by 17.
Well, maybe it's not a dumb question, what if we say no?
Sorry?
Do we have the ability to say no?
Do we have the ability to say no?
The ability to say no? I don't think we do, Bill, because I think we initially signed off on the plan.
Yeah, it depends on where you are in the consent process, because if, if they don't get local consent and a share, then they wouldn't do the project, but I believe this is fairly far, far along at this point.
They, they have us at 5,570 and them at 52,710.
Right.
That's a huge discrepancy.
Yeah, so their share, Ham Lake's share is 10 times.
Yeah, 10 times what hers is.
They might want to approve the agreement before they change that.
It's largely a triple-
Is that your recommendation, the council?
No. If you look up above, they have a line item, it's, a lot of it is they're paying for part of the actual controller, for some reason.
Ham Lake, emergency vehicle, traffic control signal system. Were they the ones that asked for this, or?
Well, I also believe this is in part because of Columbus is not a state aid city, so then those costs are covered by the county.
Oh.
Whereas Ham Lake has to give you up.
So, does Ham Lake take care of their two light poles and we take care of our two, or how's that work?
I think it says there's a-
We insure the ones on the, on the east, they insure the ones on the west.
Yeah, I think it said there's a 50, 50% in the maintenance portion.
It does say 50/50, that's why I didn't understand, why is it 50/50?
But those numbers aren't 50/50, they're 10% and 90%.
Again, that's because of the size of the cities, one being state aid, one not.
Yeah, if we ever reach 5,000 population, there's state aid money that would come to the city, but I don't know that you can build enough houses to get there.
We've been going backwards. Okay, so what were we looking for here? Looking just-
This is just a discussion item, and then direction, do you feel you want the county at the next meeting to discuss both joint powers agreements when they're on the agenda?
I think it'd be a good idea. What do you guys think?
We're asking why we need to pay that, and they'll say, well, it's a good idea.
Well, maybe they could convince me.
They can, I don't think it's fair either, but-
You guys?
I don't think it'd be a good idea to have them here, they won't gain nothing.
All right. What do you think, Mark? Not worth it?
It's not worth it. I've been here long enough to see how you talk and certain people doesn't do anything.
So pessimistic.
Welcome to Roundabout World.
No, we had the rights in that one. That was a split decision. You guys let me decide that one. All right, so I guess we don't, we don't need him to come.
Do you have any particular questions? You want, you want to see the county's policies on this? Do you want to see how it's gone in other projects, or?
Can the county policy be fought, you think?
I think the way it gets fought is the project doesn't get built, they spend the money somewhere else.
Do we need a signal at the, oh, Denny says we do.
I don't think we do, but-
I don't think we did.
It's, is a busy, is a busy intersection. There've been a few accidents there, that's why they put in a signal.
That corner coming around there.
In this case, you, you approved the project. They, they came here, made a presentation, so I-
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to unring the bell at this point, but if you want a discussion going forward-
We've done it before.
I know.
Well, I don't know, it's only going to get busier.
Yeah. All right, so moving on. Planning Commission report?
Get your answer.
Planning Commission did not meet.
Did not meet, all right. Public open forum, anyone here for public open forum? Okay, here, none will move on. We need to accept the park advisory board resignation. Mark?
I didn't know nothing until I read this. She hasn't been to the last couple of meetings, so I guess it's no surprise, but we got a vacancy.
Okay.
Has there been anybody applying for that?
I don't think we've, I don't think we've posted it yet.
We will. Okay, we, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the resignation?
Go ahead, are you doing that?
Sure, I do.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? All right, thank her for her service, and call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Engineers' report.
The first item we had was, you have a memo, is a summary memo about the SCADA, System Wide SCADA improvements and the electrical work at Ziegler Booster Station. Do you remember, we kind of split the Ziegler project into two pieces, the physical, mechanical work is done, and this is just finishing up the electrical work, and then the system wide SCADA improvements. And I have with me from TKDA, Matt Ellingson, he's our water engineer, if you have any more specific questions. We did talk to Jim Windingstad, you know, about what, what's in the, what currently the city has and what, you know, trying to match that equipment. I know we had talked briefly about the city running their own line, and that, we had numbers, we just did a very preliminary look, and the cost for that was going to be in the hundreds of thousands, 250 or, or more.
Did you look at a wireless system?
I believe we did look at a wireless system. That was-
Line up.
That was another cost.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Again, Matt Ellingson with TKDA, water engineer. So, basically what we're trying to do here is bring the Ziegler water tank onto the city water system, as was the original agreement from, I believe it was 2006. So, this last phase of the project, I'll call it, is for the electrical and the SCADA work, so we can bring the tank onto the city water system. So, our intention after meeting with city staff was to match the SCADA requirements the operators are looking for, to bring that Ziegler facility onto the city water system. We are proposing using a radio system, a SCADA system like we have at Wellhouse 1 and Wellhouse 2 and 3.
Okay, in the, is that Allen Bradley system?
Yes.
Okay. And it will be wireless, or?
It will be a radio system, yes.
Radio system?
Yep, so we'll match what we have currently at Wellhouse 2 and 3, the communication talking back to Wellhouse 1. We have had conversations with Jim Windingstad about possibly making Ziegler the main, because the intention is, once this tank is up and running on the city water system, that you would be taking water out of that water tank during the day, and we would fill that tank up to a determined level at the nighttime with the wells. So, when your demand is running, you would run out of the Ziegler water tank for your supply during the day.
Okay.
There's also, two other items on there, there's water meter replacements, that was separate, but related to the same type of work that Jim wanted, and then there was some storage tank modifications remaining yet as well. And the reason we put those all together was to see what the dollar amount would be, because after the end of this year, we'll have about 136,000 in HRA funds, so that would cover these items.
The $80,000, there's no breakdown of that?
They have it attached, um-
I do have a breakdown, I can hand that over if you wish.
Yeah, could you?
Yep.
Water reader, water meter replacements, is that everybody has one, is getting a new one?
Not, Matt, do you know what all the, the water meter?
I believe that was for the whole city, for a new reading system, to be able to read the meters remotely.
And again, the reason the, the water meters were included on there was Jim was looking for a budget source to be able to fund, so he would not have to have staff manually read the meters anymore. So, that would be a separate project that Jim would likely do in-house. He would have to purchase all the equipment and the meters from the vendor, and he did get a quote, which is reflected in that memo that is in front of you. The breakdown I just handed out is, again, just for the electrical and the SCADA portion of the work, so it itemizes that $80,000 in our cost estimate for the budget, which, if authorized for plans and specifications, we would do our design work, and we would like to finish it up by the middle to end part of August, so we can go out for quotes and complete the remainder of the project by the end of 2018.
So, this would go out for bid, then?
This, we could go out for quotes, because it's under $100,000. We can also go out for bids as well.
So, you have $100 for integration, are you planning on rewriting this, or using a package that's already put together?
We're going to start with the package we initially put together two years ago in 2016.
Okay.
As you remember, if you remember, the bids came in, we only had one bid, and it came in way over budget, so we had to repurpose and split the project up into a mechanical phase, which was completed last year, and this would be the phase two for the electrical and SCADA portions of the work. As well as, there's, I'm estimating another $10,000 for storage tank improvements, our inspection report that was done in the first phase last year, once we drained the tank revealed a couple additional action items that need to be addressed before we can put the tank on the city water system. Those are also included in the overall memo for the project.
So, the one radio is going to hook to the existing radio network?
Correct, we would point the radio currently towards Wellhouse number 1.
Okay. And the two 40-horse VFDs are Allen Bradley's, well?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe else have any questions?
When is this going to be online? What are we talking about?
Yeah, what's the timeline on this?
For the-
Getting this done, yeah.
Yeah, Matt mentioned that we would get plans and specs done by August, mid-August, hopefully for the last meeting in August, and then put out quotes or bids and get it done this year yet.
There's no water in the tank now, or?
There is water, and Ziegler's still using it.
There is water, so basically, it's only serving Ziegler right now for fire protection, as it has been for the previous 10 years. We can't put it onto the city water system, because our new pumps that we installed are not electrified yet.
Hmm.
We're running out the same fire suppression system only for Ziegler at this time. Once the project is complete, again, the intention is to run the tank with the new booster pumps to the city water system.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and I recall, in the sale of property in the Northeast Quadrant, that was an issue, and so I think having the, the tanks online will, will help with, you know, there was an earlier discussion about the Northeast Quadrant.
Okay, and entertain a motion to approve the $80,000?
Authorize preparation of plans and specs.
Right.
So moved. Second?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Elizabeth, that's funded from?
It was funded through HRA funds through the county.
All right, thanks for coming, Matt.
Thank you.
The second item, I'll say is more of a housekeeping item, you have a maintenance agreement with the, between the city and the Rice Creek Waterside District, and it's an existing agreement when Hornsbury Street South was realigned, and the design-build project with Minda and the diverging diamond interchange is, the road's going to be a little bit farther south with that, when the diverging diamond alignment comes out of it, and it's actually going to impact the two small stormwater ponds and infiltration basins that are adjacent to 97. So, it's actually going to fill them in a little bit, make them smaller, and this is just an agreement that says the city's aware of that and agrees to, and agrees to maintaining those infrastructure as, per the original agreement. So, Minda and their design-build team have looked at it, Rice Creek has looked at it, everyone's fine with it, it's just a formality for the city to say, yeah, we understand that these two basins changed shape, got a little smaller.
Okay, so want to make a motion to that effect?
No move. Second?
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. All right. Attorneys' report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at a prior meeting, you authorized the possible sale of two vacant park land pieces that are small and, and unutilized at this time, so we've begun that process. One of the items that would happen concurrently is to amend the comprehensive plan to eliminate those two properties as parkland, because they can't be sold as long as they're designated for park. So, we would just look for your motion to amend the draft comprehensive plan to delete those two parcels under the park designation.
Okay, someone-
In your additions, I did, I give you maps of the two parcels that were referred to. The first one is the Howard Lake Park, it shows the two parcels, and there are actually two parcels that the-
I don't have the additions.
Is over.
Most of it's wet.
Where's the other one?
The second parcel is off of Kettle River Boulevard, and it's landlocked.
Oh, that one? Oh, yeah, that's-
It's this one here, and there is no current road access to it.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to amend the comprehensive plan?
No move.
Okay. Okay, so with that, Elizabeth, we would be able to sell, or how's that work?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, the steps we would take would be to provide notice that the council determines that these are access to the city's needs, and then we would be accepting bids. We would likely have a public hearing process, just so anybody who wants to comment has that opportunity, and then we close the hearing and have the opportunity to take bids on the property.
How long does it take to do the comp plan? It's not an amendment or anything, we just, how does that work?
The draft, the draft plan is currently out, being with, for the review for the surrounding communities and Met Council, so with that motion, we were going to amend the draft plan.
So, this would be for the next year, at once, this wouldn't be for now, right away?
It wouldn't have to hold up the, the sale, we just didn't want a conflicting document out showing it as parkland, at the same time, we're-
Got it.
Holding a hearing to sell it.
Okay, any other discussion?
How many acres is this piece off of Kettle River?
3.3, I believe.
Well, it's wet land. Oh, I'm telling you, that's I talked Howard Lake Drive.
Kettle River? I'm confused, I thought we were selling the piece off of Broadway.
Well, Broadway's here. There was two when we talked about the last meeting.
I thought that was actually three.
Yeah, one, the third is not, there's still a covenant on it.
Okay.
For another year and a half.
The Broadway one?
Yes.
The, the, the two park properties that are before you have exceeded the 30 years.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Good. Bill, got anything?
We had our maintenance meeting last night, talked about roads and some truck purchases and some, getting ready to make their budget for next year, so that's about it. They did bring up the fact of 165th, they're talking about putting, treating it twice a year now, because it's so bad, and the group pretty much believes that we should re-enter, or relook at paving it, and they're thinking maybe the city should ante up a little more.
I agree.
Just, just because it's a-
I tried to go to 40%.
It's an artery, main artery, so it's, the road is bad, it gets, it demands a lot of, we're already out of our, and they ran out of their gravel fund about a week, and what they did was not much. I should have wrote down the roads, but it didn't go very far, so, and then we talked about future roads that are going to be paved, and stuff, 181st and Notre Dame, and some of those roads on the north end, so, for next year.
Well, we, I thought we already discussed and had a, a plan for determining which roads are through roads, collector roads, I think we used, and I thought we determined 165th and what other road was?
That's the last one.
I don't think there was two, I don't know.
165th.
From county road to county road?
Yeah, I think it was 165th.
That was the last one, yeah.
It is. So, I mean, I would be, I'd be, I know because of all the farm fields going along 165th, it's bent off, but if it hit 40% from the city's involvement, I think, ad valorem wise, people would be benefited from the cross-country journey, so.
What was the percentage last time we did that?
20%. I got Dennis got it for me, it's 20%.
The numbers per person was pretty doggone low, I think it was under $7,000.
64.
6,200.
6,450.
Yeah.
So-
Still got shot, though.
But the ones that own multiple properties are the ones that got hit hard, I think.
Yeah.
Why they wouldn't, the rest of them wouldn't have at least gone for it, it's, those houses are so close to the road, do, some of them.
Oh, yeah, you just see the clouds every time somebody drives by.
Yeah, so now they're talking about treating it twice a year, so, I mean, we spent $40,000 on treating the roads so far this year.
And it didn't do very many miles at all.
Well, I think they got all the gravel roads done when they treated them, didn't they get them all done? Yeah.
Even like 165th, they actually skipped sections of it this year to, to save on the application. You know, they skipped on the swamps, they just hit where the houses were at primarily.
Right.
Past times, they haven't done that.
And it's crapshoot, because they, they put it down and it rains, and you just wasted $40,000.
Well, and that road's not limestone, so it loosens up really fast, so.
Couple spots that are almost always wet, that, not a problem, but-
Anyways, so.
I'd like to see it raised, I don't know, what do you guys think?
25%?
You'd have to bow out, because you're on the road.
Yep.
Denny?
I'm for it, yeah.
Okay, well, there's three of us for it, so you're not for it?
No. 25%, we're at 20, 25 is the size I'd want to go with.
Okay, maybe they want to make a motion to go to 40%? I mean, how would that work, Elizabeth? We'd have to revisit it, or just retake the what we got, send it out with new assessments and take a vote?
We could go the route where, you know, including, including them within the neighborhood meeting, because we are going to do some neighborhood meetings this fall for next year. We could go, we could send out letters and say, more of a question, if, if the city contributes X, this is what it originally was, just going off the numbers we already have.
We have the numbers, if it was, say, 6,400, back in another 20% from the city, it would go down to 5,200 or some number, whatever it is.
We could send out-
Send that out and go, would you be in favor?
Right.
Bill?
Well, one item to consider, if it's a petition project, you only need a simple majority, if it's not, if it's a council-ordered project, you need a supermajority, so you'd need four votes to approve the project. So, if you hold a neighborhood meeting and you want to ask the-
Wait, wait, a supermajority of the voting member, or a supermajority of the body?
Yeah, because Mark has to step down it.
I have to step down, I live on that road.
Right, I believe it's a supermajority.
Or would he have to step down?
He wouldn't have to step down, I have to look at that, the, if, if a project runs in front of your house and you're going to be assessed, you probably have to stay out of the vote. If it's a general, if it's a project of general, general improvement in the city, you wouldn't. So, that's usually the line between having a conflict or not, but I can look at it.
It doesn't save him money, it costs him money.
I can, I can confirm that before he has to step down.
Yeah, okay.
Generally, if it runs in front of your property, you can't vote on it, if it's somewhere else in the city, you can vote on it.
Okay. Okay.
The only thing I would like to say on that, though, is it's probably the most highly time-consuming, money-consuming dirt road of the city. I mean, a lot goes into that road every year. It does. A lot. Still.
If you follow, you know, your usual neighborhood process, then you could seek a petition project.
We did follow the project, and it failed.
But that was at 25 percent. If you're going to increase-
Twenty, 20 percent.
Twenty percent. So if you're going to increase the city's share, that's a policy determination that can be made.
Okay. If you want to make a-
This is kind of like Notre Dame. I mean, you know, we had to step to the plate there to get that done.
Wasn't here then. Wasn't here then.
Neither was I, but-
I believe that was 20, 20 percent contribution.
Twenty? Okay. If you want to make a motion to that? I will. Make a motion to, we raise the 40 percent and send out a letter. Anybody want to second it?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Well, for people who have paid 100 percent of share, and you don't get subsidized by the city, it's not fair, I don't think.
This road gets used by a lot of people, and it's not on the road. Most roads get used by the people-
Exactly.
-that live on that road.
They should go down different roads and-
Well, that's not how it is. Then we got to shut her down.
You don't shut it down.
Shut it down. Put up roadblock. Do what we did up for Blair's.
Okay.
All right. All right.
I just think we should get the people in here, the ones on there, and see what they say and-
Okay.
You know, maybe they-
That's, that's different than sending out a letter. If you want another neighborhood meeting, we can certainly do that, where everyone comes in and Dennis and I host the meeting. Sending out a letter and asking for input is just sending it out and getting something back in the mail.
I think we should have a neighborhood meeting.
Okay. I amend my motion to include a neighborhood meeting.
Second, let's see.
Okay. All right. I'll call for a vote. Bill?
Aye.
Jeff?
This is just for a meeting, though.
For me. Meeting at 40.
And discussion's going to be-
They'll come back to us for a vote.
At 40 percent? Is that what's going to come with the meeting?
That's part of the motion.
Part of the motion is that the meeting will be talking about a 40 percent participation.
Nay.
Nay. Danny?
Aye.
Mark Lobstains, and I say aye. So you'll have to include that, Elizabeth, in your thing. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Bill?
No. Just, like I said, they're talking about trucks, so they're going to be bringing some of that, you know, they're doing their homework on a new truck. JW needs a truck, and I think there isn't a building inspector's going to need one, isn't he? So they're just kind, and then we got the 99 Ford that's falling apart. So there, I think the plans are to move JW's truck down, so, you know, to this level that the 99 is at. You know, then he was talking about not wanting to put a plow on it. I think it should have a, I mean, I think most people at the meeting thought it should have a plow on it and be equipped so it can go to work, you know? It's supposed to work. It's not supposed to-
I also talked to JW about, I guess the salt brine is really playing havoc on our vehicles.
Oh, yeah. It plays havoc on everybody's vehicle.
Yeah, but ours as well, the ones that are applying it.
I know.
And as well as a potentially alternative for the calcium chloride.
We have, we have, we have three trucks in the shop this week with, with major brake line problems, and it's caused by that. At this time of year, it starts coming on, so if we could eliminate, I mean, what's the plus to put that down in Columbus? Forest Lake did theirs last year before a storm, and it never hit, and it was like 40 or 50 grand to put that stuff down, to do the whole city.
So it doesn't cost us that much, but-
Oh, I know. But it's the-
No, that calcium chloride or magnesium chloride or whatever they put down is also available in a powder form that could potentially be spread by the dump truck and a spreader for the dirt roads.
My guess is that's just as corrosive as the liquid stuff.
More than likely.
So anyways, but the, like, the new, you know, one of the dump trucks is getting to the point where it's not very functional anymore, and the new dump trucks have stainless components on them, dump beds and all that stuff. So we'll see. See what they come up with.
Okay. Jeff?
We had a cable commission meeting here before tonight. We did, and Paul is here now, of course, troubleshooting the system, making sure everything's up and running before you send somebody else out. And talking about roads, I want us to want to discuss, I know Bill brought up last meeting, was Howard Lake Drive. I mean, Howard Lake Road is getting beat up by trucks going down. I think we should look at weight limit on that road. Bill mentioned the last, last meeting.
Truck's going 35 miles an hour, shouldn't cause any damage.
Don't think so.
No haul route, it's not a way.
Going 55, maybe.
I don't know.
If there's damage, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis.
It's a five-ton road. It's not a nine-ton road.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The damage is probably due to the shoulder, lack there of a shoulder. That corrosion at the edges and-
Possibly a combination of that and the truck weight.
Yeah. So-
Let me think about it. I seen another semi go by tonight, besides the asphalt, I mean, cement plant there in the corner. Another place I started using it pretty heavy now. Get any of them, but they're in-
Knife River?
No, they go by quite a bit, but there's another one. But just too many trucks going down that road loaded.
We just turn it into a sidewalk then?
No, I think we can keep the better traffic going through. That'd be these county roads. Shortcut for cement trucks and dirt ton, it's just-
So are you proposing that it's a no haul route?
I think it should be turned into that. I don't want a shortcut. It'd cost the city that much money to replace it.
Okay.
So if I got any support on that, I don't know.
Guess you'd have to make a motion to see if it gets seconded. That's the, that's the process.
Yeah. I'm never going to make a motion.
No? Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mark?
I have nothing today.
Danny?
Saturday, Bill and his, Jody and Jim from the planning commission, I and I went to the veterans memorial dedication.
Wasn't able to go, but-
If you guys, anybody gets a chance, it's over in Cool Lake Beach. It's easy accessible. You don't have to get out of your car. You just drive along, take a look if you wanted to. It's, it's a nice setup. City not known to us at the time. Donated a granite, piece of granite, and they put a plaque on it. And it's, had a good turnout. I'd say 100, 150 people were there, mostly veterans, but, you know, food was good, too. It was, if you get a chance, see it, drive along. It's, it's, it's a nice, nice part, addition to the park.
Yeah, they did a very nice job with the whole dedication thing. It turned out, turned out really nice, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. I have nothing. Public Works report, JW's not here. Public Information Coordinator?
Yeah, I have a PowerPoint I'd like to discuss with you guys about. It's a short PowerPoint. It has to do with the Data Practices Act as it relates to social media. I was contacted by a company called Archive Social, and they provided me with this PowerPoint. I'm pretty much bringing it to you guys for just discussion. I'm not recommending anything, but I think it's something that should be brought to your attention. So if you want to go to the next slide, we have two social media pages that I actively use, well, three. I use Facebook, Nextdoor, and Twitter. Content that our constituents create on these social media pages can fall under the Data Practices Act. So what people comment on our statuses, what people share from our page can fall under this Data Practices Act. The problem is that people are constantly deleting, editing, and creating content all day long. So if somebody comments on a Facebook status that I put out there, they can delete it immediately, and they can also edit it. There's no way, Facebook has no way of keeping that record. So if somebody deletes a comment, it's gone forever, unless we work with a company like Archive Social to have all of our records archived. Does that make sense?
It does. But can't our data practices policy say we only retain them for as long as they're up there? I mean, Bill, there's some point where, I know the county has a 90-day retention policy. We have, working on our retention policy. I mean, it's all about your policy.
If you go to the next slide, it has the Minnesota Data Practices Act, and I'm not sure if, you know, if our policy can override this.
It, it says what's, that's about what is and isn't public information, but your policy then determines whether or not you archive it and keep it for how long. So if we keep it forever, it's discoverable forever. We don't keep it forever. Is that right?
Right. Mr. Mayor and Council, no, we can't override the Data Practice Act. Our policies have to be consistent with it. But virtually every city of any size has a retention policy.
Exactly.
Those materials that are retained for longer periods, those materials that are retained for shorter periods. And certainly, our policy could address how long we hold on to media that's, that's essentially on the internet. We don't have an affirmative obligation to take it, like, essentially a screenshot and archive it. The question I think you're asking is, is it desirable because someone may make a comment that, that you'd like to go back to, and it's gone?
Yeah. That's the problem, is we can't retain something that a person deletes.
Well, I believe our, Elizabeth and I have been talking about this, but our policies on how long we keep voicemails, how long we keep emails, how long we keep the things that we are not required to retain. No, there's certain things we're required to retain, like city council minutes and all that happy business. But the things we're not required to keep, it just begins an archival nightmare to keep it all. So it's, it's-
I think the reason that this, this company exists is because whether or not, it's, it's whether or not a person decides to keep their comment online. If they want to delete it, then we have no, we, there's no way for us to retain it. Or say, for example, if there's something controversial that happens in the city and people are commenting and, and things like that, and somebody, a lawyer comes up and asks for everything that has to do with this topic, then there's potentially a number of things that have been deleted that we'll never be able to get back again. And that can present a problem.
Right.
So I guess I was just offering this as just information for y'all that this type of software exists.
We do need to think about that when we do our data retention policy.
Mm-hmm.
How, how much does something like this cost?
It costs $200 a month.
Oof.
Yeah.
Is it just Facebook that does it, or does Twitter and the other also have a same situation?
Same situation. So on Twitter, you can delete and, you actually can't edit your tweets, but you can delete your tweets. Their, $200 a month is their cheapest option that they have, and that covers up to 10 different social networks. So we would definitely fall under that. And it also covers you for 1,000 records a month, which we would definitely be under. We, we don't get a lot of traction on our, on our pages, but-
You could screen scrape it yourself. It's just work.
If it's still there. That's the problem, is people can delete it. And Archive Social saves it. If, any comment at any time, it is archived with this, with this service.
I mean, you could archive daily. If they made it in the morning and deleted it in the afternoon, yeah, you might miss it, but-
Yeah.